Good evening, everyone. It being 7:05 and a quorum present, I am going to call this August 27 meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board to order. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 28, 2025, this meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so in person or via the Zoom meeting application. The link and login information is available on the town website. We start with our administrative notes. We have no minutes, no covenants, plans, and releases, and no Form As this evening, so I'm going to jump straight into announcements. The Master Plan Committee will hold its next meeting tomorrow, August 28, at 6:00 p.m. People may attend in person at Town Hall or via Zoom. On the agenda is a presentation by our consultants on financial and economic analysis and ideas for the format of the master plan document itself. The Open Space Committee will also be meeting tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. The meeting is virtual only. On the agenda are fall town meeting items. On September 24, Sustainable Plymouth will be screening a film and hosting a community discussion about major U.S. recent storms and implications for local community safety and resilience. It will be held at the Public Library on South Street, beginning at 4:30 p.m. There is no charge, and all are welcome. Next on our agenda this evening, we have a public hearing. So we actually have two related public hearings, so I'm going to open both public hearings at the same time, so forgive me when I have to read out the same notice twice. The Plymouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the 1820 courtroom, 26th Court Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts, on Wednesday, August 27, 2025, at 7:05 p.m., to hear the petition of ADM Agawam Development LLC for approval of a definitive subdivision plan for Redbrook Use Area 14 and street names Preservation Way, Safron Way, and Dalio Way for land located off Wareham Road, Plymouth, Massachusetts, in order to divide land of ADM Agawam Development LLC to create 67 single-family homes in a rural residential zone, Plymouth, Massachusetts, shown on Assessor's Map 117 as lots A-36 and 4-53. The plan is shown as definitive subdivision of plan of land Redbrook Use Area 14 off Wareham Road, Plymouth, Mass., located at Zero Wareham Road, parcel 117-000-000A-053, map 117A-53, and map 1174-36 in the Rural Residential Zoning District. The petitioner and/or his representative, or any person interested and desiring to be heard on this special, on this request, should appear at the time and place designated. Also being opened, the Plymouth Planning Board will host a public hearing in the 1820 courtroom, 26th Court Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts, on Wednesday, August 27, 2025, at 7:05 p.m., to hear the petition of ADM Agawam Development LLC for approval of a definitive subdivision plan for Redbrook Use Area 16 and street names Peony Place for land located at 11 River Runway, Plymouth, Massachusetts, in order to divide land of ADM Agawam Development LLC to create six duplex-style buildings for a total of 12 income-restricted units in a rural residential zone, shown on Assessor's Map 115 as lots A-42. The plan shown as definitive subdivision plan, Redbrook Use Area 16, located at 11 River Runway, Plymouth, Massachusetts, parcel 115-000-000A-042, located at 11 River Runway, parcel 115-000-000A-042 in the RR zoning district. The petitioner, or his or her representative, or any other person interested and desiring to be heard on this request, should appear at the time and place designated. That's your cue, Mr. Gorsika.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. My name is Dan Gorsika. I am Vice President of ADM Agawam Development, and I'm here representing the Redbrook Project. We're here this evening to present Use Area 14 per the Section 6L of the special permit and receive confirmation that the submittal is in conformance with the master plan special permit, the Redbrook design guidelines, and the Trevitt bylaws. Use Area 14 is in this section here, the highlighted section. It's located off of Wareham Road, southwest corner of our property. The neighborhood entrance is on the west side of Wareham Road, just south of Scoop Drive, which was part of Use Area 12, that was previously approved by this board. To support this area, ADM is upgrading approximately 800 linear feet of Wareham Road to meet town standards, to improve traffic flow and access for residents. The proposed neighborhood includes 67 single-family homes, all market rate. The proposed homes are between 1,800 and 2,500 square feet, and are between two, and are two to four bedrooms, depending on the home style. The homes will be constructed by E.J. Pontiff. He was the builder of Use Area 9 and 12 at Redbrook. There's a total of 67 transfer development rights being used. The TDRs are coming from Frogfoot East ascending area. All that land associated with these TDRs is in conservation restriction. As a result of the 67 TDRs, seven affordable units are required. The required affordable units will be constructed as part of Use Area 16, which we'll be reviewing momentarily. For every 20 market-rate homes in Use Area 14, one duplex building, which is two units, would be constructed as part of Use Area 16, so the intent is to do these projects simultaneously. As I discussed with the TDRs, this is just a map that is showing the land that is already in conservation, which is nearly 1,800 acres. That's represented in green, and then the green, the pink, and the orange areas just represent about another 500 or so acres that will be going into conservation as a result of this project. Oh, sorry about that. As mentioned, we are improving 800 feet of Wareham Road. That brings us up a little bit south of the new entrance to the neighborhood. This is the entrance of the neighborhood here. This is Scoop Drive, which was part of Use Area 12. A new sidewalk, as you can see. The sidewalk today runs on Wareham Road on this side. To try to minimize impacts to these existing butters, we're moving it over a little bit here, as the topography is a little bit more conducive here, the sidewalk. It then does cross the street over again to the other side, and the sidewalk will run through the limits of Wareham Road project. To further enhance the safety, we have proposed two raised crosswalks. They're two raised pedestrian crosswalks, one just south of Area 11 and 12, which is right here, and then one is just north of the entrance of Use Area 14, which is right there. If some of you may have driven by down there, we started this roadwork about a month or so ago. The binder course was installed today. Those raised crosswalks will then be installed shortly. They want to wait until the asphalt cures a little bit, make sure it's set up, and then they'll key those in, so within the next week or so, those two will be installed, and then utilities, landscaping, and appropriate signage will follow. The neighborhood itself will feature formal landscaping at both the main entrance and the two islands that you see here. Excuse me. That's consistent with how our landscaping approach in Redbrook are. We try to formalize key focal points of each neighborhood, specifically the entrance or any cul-de-sacs, and then the offgrading shoulders. We try to save as much natural vegetation as we can. There will be some areas in here that are off the roadside edges, like as you get further into the project, that will renaturalize, we call it. We actually take existing forest mat, and we put it back in place. There is also, from a pedestrian standpoint, as I mentioned, there's the sidewalk that comes down Wareham Road. There's also an existing, that we call a Bessie Bog Road, which is an existing gravel road to service water infrastructure and the CR land that's to the west. There will be an emergency access connection point at this cul-de-sac, so for both for emergency access, but also for pedestrian access. Excuse me. The stormwater is managed by deep-sump-hooded catch basins, water quality units, sediment forebays, and they ultimately, ultimately are discharging to existing low-lying depressions for natural groundwater recharge. Also, not only with the recharge, but doing this method also allows you to minimize disturbance as it relates to cutting trees down for, for constructed basins. Wastewaters will be collected through a series of gravity manholes, and wastewater ultimately discharges an anisement through this point here, which goes into Use Area 12, which ultimately dumps into Pump Station 5, which is off of Wareham Road. The remaining utilities, water, gas, electric, and telecommunications, will be provided off of Wareham Road. I touched on wastewater. I just wanted to say a brief update on wastewater. The plant itself was completed in May. Everything is fully operational and functioning, and things are going well. These are just example photos from Eric Pontiff's portfolio, as far as what he's building at Redbrook and his other neighborhoods that he's done prior. I also wanted to give a board an update. In our special permit, as part of our traffic mitigation package to allow Redbrook to occur, we agreed to a substantial traffic mitigation package, and this is the last intersection, major intersection improvement that we're doing. This is the intersection of Long Pond Road, Halfway Pond Road, and Bloody Pond Road. We started, I laugh because we started utility coordination probably 18 months ago, but we started physical construction this past April. I'd say about 90% of the roadwork itself inside the road, like drainage structures, crossings alike, those are complete. The last, the stuff we have left is final pavement, final striping, and then the traffic signals. So over the course of the next several months, leading to the fall, because the traffic signals are just the longest lead item, you'll see that come to shape and be completed. And then just along those lines, this is just the slide showing, again, all of our, frankly, all of our completed commitments that we've made to the town, that we have completed since we began Redbrook. And the only, again, most notably is just the large traffic mitigation package that we've agreed to do for the town. And most recently, we did just formally deed over the fire station parcel to the town of Plymouth to be used for a fire station. Normally, I would ask for questions, but I'm going to wrap right into Use Area 16. Thank you. So for this, we're here this evening for Use Area 16, again, per Section 6L of the special permit, and to receive confirmation that the plan submittal, the submittal itself is in conformance with the master plan special permit, design guidelines, and the Trevitt This slide shows the illustrative master plan again. The yellow box represents the location of Use Area 16, which is right there. It is located off of River Runway, which is the main road that goes from Bourne Road up until our Village Center. Excuse me. The entrance is on the north side of River Runway. It's directly across the entrance of Waterview Way. Waterview Way was part of Use Area 8, which was approved by this board some years ago. This creates an intersection with the predominant traffic flow to be River Runway, and then we'll have a stop condition already on Waterview, and we'll have another stop condition on Peony Place, which is the new roadway name. There already is an existing raised pedestrian crosswalk here that we installed, I want to say, five or six years ago, on River Runway, so that the location, frankly, is ideal. As you're coming down that hill, you're already aware and slowing down. The proposed neighborhood includes six duplex homes for a total of 12 units. All of the units are income-restricted at 80% AMI, area median income. The proposed homes will be about 1,000 square feet and have about three bedrooms. There may be an option for a fourth. We're still fin, those are still being finalized. The homes will be constructed by the same home builder, Eric Pontiff, who constructed the homes in Use Area 9 and 12. Per the permit, because these are all income-restricted, TDRs are not required to construct affordable homes. As discussed previously during the Use Area 14 presentation, these homes will be constructed in parallel. Because they're duplexes, what we're, what we're proposing is for every substantially complete 20 market-rate homes, we're completing one duplex building, which is, which is two units, which is trying to target that 10%. This is an illustrative plan, showing, showing the new road. There'll be, again, similar to other entrances, there'll be formal landscaping at the main entrance. We'll also have formal landscaping at the rear of the property where there is a cul-de-sac. Again, this is consistent with all of our other neighborhoods. As noted previously, there is an existing raised pedestrian crosswalk right at this location, so as you're coming down the hill from either direction, it's just a visual cue, again, to slow people down. And I will say, I think it works for probably about 70% of the drivers. Some drivers, you know, just frankly don't care. There's this existing sidewalk on River Runway today. There'll be modifications at the entrance to, just for that sidewalk to come into the entrance to allow to receive it. There is also an existing trail trace that runs through here, because there's an existing sewer line that runs through there, so we put a trail on top of it. So now it will be the road, and then we'll reconfigure the end of the trail to pick it back up over this way. So you have some nice pedestrian connection, not only to get you to a little bit of a wooded area, or towards the power lines or Wareham Road, but then also, this allows you to go up and walk up to the Village Center. Similar to Use Area 14, inconsistent with all Use Areas, the stormwater approach is the same. Deep-sump-hooded catch basins, water quality units were required, sediment forebays, and then ultimately discharging to an existing low-lying depression here. There is, you can't see it on here, but they're in the view, there is a wetland that's further down this way. It's also a vernal pool. We are well outside the 100-foot puffer and the 200-foot puffer. We're about 500 feet away from that area over there. And again, here, the intent here is to discharge an existing low-lying depression to minimize tree disturbance or anything being cut down that doesn't have to be. The remaining utilities are serviced by River Runway. Well, let me go first. I'll talk about sewer. There is that sewer trace, so all we're doing here is just connecting the services from the homes to the existing sewer line that's there. That ultimately goes across the street to a pump station further south, which then ultimately discharges to the wastewater treatment facility. The other utilities are just being serviced off of River Runway. There's already water, gas, electric, and telecommunications in River Runway. This style community that we're trying, it's a, it's a small-scale neighborhood, again, six buildings, 12 units. The compact design will allow for smaller homes on smaller lots, which helps reduce ongoing maintenance costs. The size of the building, from an energy standpoint, there'll be less building to heat, less building to cool, but still allowing those bedrooms to get people that may have either a couple or a single person with a couple of kids, or so on and so forth, be there. We think by doing this way, it does result in meaningful cost savings for residents from a utility standpoint, but then also with a smaller yard, yes, there's some disadvantages, but at the same time, it's less things to maintain and take care of and to spend money on. By lowering those utility and maintenance expenses, the community, we're trying to support long-term financial stability of homeowners, and we know Redbrook has HOA fees, which is like, LOA fees, rather, in private utilities, so we're cognizant of those fees, plus any type of utility or maintenance costs for a new homeowner. And also, as discussed, that these homes will be priced, remaining of, the affordable buyers, at 80% area median income. So I just wanted to give you just a general update on affordable. I'll make this brief. As some of you recall, our initial special permit, we agreed to do 103 affordable units. Our commitment now is 113. As part of the Cranberry Commons project, Use Area 15, we committed to an additional 10 affordable units. This is just a breakdown of where we're at today and what we have remaining. I put these in order of Use Area numbers, not necessarily orders of when things were done. Use Area 6, Phase 2, 2, there are two of them. The lottery is underway. Occupancy will be in the end of '25. Use Area 7, Phase 1 and 2, there are 15. Those are completed and occupied. Use Area 12, there are three. Those are all recently occupied. Use Area 15, that's the Grantham Group in Cranberry Commons, that's 62. I did want to just give a brief update. I know we're not here for that tonight, but site work will be pending, starting this fall. Some of you, the residents, may have seen today, the surveyors are out there laying out the tree flagging. I got the call yesterday saying, hey, we can come out tomorrow. So I said, yep, come out, come out tomorrow. So we'll, we'll see that activity beginning probably first, second week of October. So Grantham is still working towards their closing with the funds, but everything's in order. It's just getting all those documents together, getting everyone to the table, and physically closing. So that's exciting news. That project's about a 10- to 12-month build, so you'll start seeing occupancy 10 or 12 months, about a year from now. And then Use Area 16, which we just talked about, is 12 units. That would get us to a total of 94 units, with the remaining that we have left would be 19 units. Again, this is just a slide showing the commitments to the town that we have made over the years since Redbrook. And I have to say, the land conservation, the traffic improvements, I would, I would put us against any developer in this town, or the state for that matter, as far as the commitment we have made locally to the people here, not only at Redbrook, but for the greater town of Plymouth.
and again, Dan may want to talk about this, but so, a few things here. So first of all, just make it clear that the units and the, the number of homes we're talking about here have been approved. They were approved from the original special permit. What's before this board tonight are two things. One is reviewing the road and the road construction standards to make sure these roads comply with the town's subdivision rules and regulations. And second, to some extent, looking at this from a site plan review process through the overall special permit that was granted. So those are the two things before the board. The quantum of vote is three members in favor, since this is really essentially a subdivision and site plan review. What we were just, oh, and then I just point out that this has been peer-reviewed by a peer-review company. Fire Department, DPW, have all looked at this. They have raised issues. The petitioner is willing to comply with those, and as we've done before, you have the comments there, and what will happen is they don't get to proceed with either of these phases until we have a final sign-off that says all of those concerns have been addressed, and that's when we come back, before we say you can proceed. So we'll be still working out some of the technical issues. They're aware of all those issues and are willing to comply with it. What I was just talking about was, first of all, on page seven of the draft vote we prepared, condition number four, where, as, as Dan pointed out, for every 20 units constructed, there would be two affordables. So my recommendation is that we change that and add the word substantially constructed, because I'm not sure what construction meant, and there may be some point where we feel like we're at 90 or 95% complete, that really we're looking to make sure that those affordable units are substantially constructed, not at the word constructed, I'm not sure. Substantially just gives us a little more clarity. And then the second part is, Dan was very focused on making sure he met his commitment for this, the second subdivision. What I'm recommending, and I do apologize because I did not consider this before, but to basically say that for the last, so the way he's set this up, you would have the development, the affordables required for this development being built consecutive with, with these. What I'm recommending is we add another provision that says for the last five units in the market-rate neighborhood, that occupancy permits not be issued until all of the units in the affordable neighborhood are substantially constructed, so that now we have a commitment, not just to the affordables that were required for this neighborhood, but for the, lack of a better word, catch-up affordables that we're also including in that other affordable, the 12-unit affordable neighbor duplex neighborhood. So again, adding the word substantially to constructed, and then also putting the additional caveat in that the last five units in, in the market-rate neighborhood, occupancy permits not be issued until we have substantial construction of all of the affordables in the affordable neighborhood. Dan, I don't know if you wanted to say something about that now, or, okay.
Anything else from staff?
No. Again, this is all consistent with the special permit and the peer review.
If I could have just clarified, what we're talking about is on these 67, the last five, as it relates to these 12 affordable units.
Correct.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gorsika, let me, let me ask the question then, as we go along. So we are needing, what kind of verification is the town going to get that as you're proceeding for every 20 market rate, that two have been, two of the affordables have been completed? Do we have some sort of verification mechanism that's established for that?
So what we, what we will do is, it's a condition of approval, and as, and I know Colleen will be leaving us shortly, which is very disappointing, but I hope she enjoys her retirement, but that position will be responsible for, as Colleen does now, the replacement person looks at all these conditions, and we monitor them very closely. So when, when they get to the 20th, and they, she has, and the next person will have a spreadsheet, and we monitor all of these conditions, and once they hit that 20, we'll be looking to make sure that they, they have complied. And if they don't, then the, the issue would be, building permits wouldn't be issued for the 21st.
Okay, so we're, we're clarifying, just to say that, as accepted, the practices will be that we'll monitor building permits as they come through. For every 20 market rate units, we want to see two of the affordable units substantially complete, and if that is not the case, new building permits will not be issued.
Right. And the reason we want to use the word substance, substantially, sometimes it's occupancy, but there can be things that really start to make it difficult when you have some final sign-offs or something. So again, we want to make sure that, that those affordables are 95, 96% complete before we're comfortable saying the next, knowing full well that no matter what, at the very end, we have the five occupancies to withhold, to make sure that everything is buttoned up before we release those last five.
That certainly makes sense, given that occupancy of an affordable unit is a complex process that can take a while. There's a lot of administration that goes into that, above and beyond just simply selling the unit, so.
And there are.
It makes sense not to trigger it on occupancy, but rather on substantial completion.
And there are two things. One is an occupancy permit, which just means the, the structure is suitable for occupancy versus occupancy, meaning that it's actually sold as affordable. And so what we're saying is not even just the occupancy permit, just that in, in staff's opinion, the, the units are substantially complete, then would come occupancy, and then would become occupied.
Okay. Very good. At this point, I'm going to open this up to public comment. Public comment can apply to either or both of the use areas. Public comment policy is three minutes per person. If you need more time, you're going to have to ask for it, and if you're going to be long when you start off, ask in advance, because we're going to have a number of people, I'm sure, who want to speak, who want to hear from everybody, and we want to be fair to everyone. So I'm going to start with people in the room. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on either of these use areas? Gentlemen in the rear first.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Katz. I live at 20 Farm Road in Red Brook. I'm here tonight just to ask a couple of quick questions relative to the site prep and plan for both, probably both, for the 67 and for the affordable housing 12. I'm interested in the potential for an increase without plan in our LOA. As a resident of Red Brook, I pay in LOA, and it went up once already since I've owned my house, for an unexpected need in a unplanned growth for our septic and our, you know, and our water. So the, the question is, do we have a plan? And is there a cost that needs to be endured by the residents for additions of 67 new homes and 12? Simply put.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Groveland, 4 River Birch Way, Red Brook resident for nine and a half years now, so I've been here pretty much the whole build-out. Just a couple of things, and Dan's slides were perfect timing, because I was going to bring it up based on those slides. So the first slide that Dan brought up was ADM's commitments to the permit. So this is a copy of the official permit, signed, sealed, and delivered on May 13, 2008. I think the only people in this room that were there at the time is probably Lee. But if you read the permit, it asks ADM for certain commitments. On the commitment piece, the only thing that I can see that's not been done, that's been committed to, are athletic playing fields of two acres or more. Page eight of the permit. So I'd really like to find out what's going to happen with athletic fields. And then the second piece, on page 11 of that permit, was enforcement. And after the eight years I've been attending planning board meetings, tonight was the first night I actually heard Lee and the board discuss enforcement, which is great. So I appreciate that. On the affordable housing piece that Dan had up, just a brief cover letter that Dan sent to the board of, the select board and town manager on August 11, 2025. Attached for your review is, and signature, two copies of the regulatory agreement for Red Brook Use Area, Area Six, Phase Five, Town Homes on the Green, these two affordable units outlined in the area. Use Area Six, Phase Five, approval on July 30, 20, on July 31. Further demonstrate our dedication to this project and our affordable housing commitment. As we stand here tonight, I just want people to realize, after 10 years, we only have 20 affordable housing units built out of the commitment of the original 103, but of 113 now. So it's kind of late in the game for really enforcing affordable housing. I'm glad to see it. I'm still a little nervous about the remaining 19 that still have to be built. I love Lee's suggestion about holding them accountable with market rate versus affordable being built at the same time. I love the idea that PNTF is doing both, so we don't, we don't have to chase builders. So I'm very happy. I love the, the two use areas. I have no problem getting them approved tonight, but I just want to make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's going forward, because we don't have many bites at the apple left, and I just want to make sure that the residents in the community are aware what's going to happen as we end up building out this development. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. John Ratchlis, 22 Cranberry Farm Road in Red Brook. I'm just here to express my support for this as an abutter. My neighborhood will be next to this new neighborhood. As a resident of two and a half years, I knew from the beginning that this neighborhood was planned. I have been at most of the planning board meetings where this has been discussed over the last year, and I think that the, the planning board has definitely brought some order to chaos here and, and lined things up. And I think ADM has stepped up to the plate, as I think Dan demonstrated. And as a resident, I see these 67 new neighbors providing support for our clubs, for current commercial development that we have, and perhaps new development, which I think a lot of residents would like to see. There was a question about LOA fees. The costs of the development will be spread across, basically, another 7% or 8%. So that actually financially supports the ongoing costs of the development. So I'm just here to say that, that I support it and look forward to construction starting.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Al Donardo, 46 Sunflower Way. I'm a town meeting member, precinct 17. Everything cuts both ways, every, every decision we make. My question would be, what, and I know this is kind of hard to nail this down, but what would be the timeline of this? It's all inevitable, and we have to understand, as the previous speaker had said, that these additional homes will be paying into our LOA. Red Brook is a net giver to the town, especially in the educational system. Last I checked, I know it's changing every six months or so, but last I checked, I think it was about $10 million. And if we do that calculation of, I think it was 91 students last year, it was about $2 million net giver to, to the school system. So we, you know, I, I know we want to curb development, but we have to understand both sides. And in closing, I want to say, I know on a national level, everything's divided government, but the purpose of dividing government is that we don't go at it with one another, that we have a compromise that both can live with, and we bring balance to that with the residents and businesses. I'm glad what I'm hearing tonight. I don't think AD Makepeace was ever going to run off to the Cayman Islands. They are here with us. They're going to be with us. And we did have a water issue three years ago, and I had asked the planning board as an order or condition to, to put a condition on that. It was two seasons, and the water issue has been cleared up. There was a meeting with Weston and Sampson. So, so far, so good, and as, we must just move forward and verify. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, planning board. My name is Susie Affleck Childs. I live at 23 Winterberry Way in the Winterberry neighborhood of Red Brook, and I've been a resident for seven and a half years, and love being in Red Brook. When we moved to Red Brook, and one of the key points of its marketing and, and heritage, I guess you could say, is, is the whole quote of "living in harmony with nature." And, and Red Brook has certainly done an awesome job with that in terms of the open space that's been dedicated. The concern I have is that early on, in the early neighborhoods, of which I am one, and Keith, Keith is one as well, there seemed to be a real effort by both Makepeace and the builders to retain more clusters of woods within the subdivision itself. And I have seen, over the course of the other neighborhoods being built, that the builders seem to be a little more robust in their land clearance endeavors, and I think it's to the, to the detriment of, of the neighborhoods and the whole kind of feel. So I would, I wish that there could be something the planning board could do on that to require a little bit more in terms of some, within the subdivisions themselves, some identification of tree clusters, woods that, that could be retained and turned really into a, a site feature. So that's one item. Regarding the affordable housing component, I have some concern about what the definition of substantially complete means. It's clear that, you know, you're not saying it has to be an occupancy permit, but what, what really does that mean? And so I would hope in the permit itself, there's some performance measures, some indicators of, of how far along in, in that process. It is how far along in terms of the building permit, sign-offs for the different stages of, of development as well. It's, it's a, it's a little vague in my, in my mind. The also question, I believe, that 19 affordable units are left under Makepeace's obligation, commitment, responsibility. And I was under the impression that the planning board had provided some assurance to the residents and the neighborhoods that you really wanted to see a, a clear-cut plan for how all of the affordable units were going to be put into place. And it was great to see the whole list of what has been done and is forthcoming, but I'm not seeing anything about those other 19 units. And I would imagine that any other neighborhoods that are going to be coming in may not be suitable to have affordable units built within them, and so there's going to be some challenges in terms of how to do that. So again, I would ask the, the planning board to consider trying to get, Makepeace and you to get on the same page in terms of where that is going. And maybe there's other information you have that I'm not aware of, but I think it's important. And the last comment I have, in terms of the 12-unit duplexes, I saw two sort of facade designs for those. I think, I don't know if that's just the only two that are going to be developed. One of them, on the right-hand side of that slide, is very much in keeping with the Red Brook flavor and the homes. I would say that the one on the left is a very boxy, very rote, very uninteresting, very uninspiring, and very out of Red Brook character. So again, I know this is not a design review process, but I think, I think it's important that this, especially affordable units, be done right and in character with the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Affleck Childs, just so you know, substantially complete is a technical term. It's a term of art in the building industry. It's one that the planning department is more than familiar with. Substantial completion means that what remains to be done are punch-list items rather than substantive items. So it essentially means that the building could be occupied, but there may be cosmetic or other minor things that need to be finished. So that is the definition of substantial completion that's accepted in the industry. It's the one that the planning department and the building inspector will be required to follow. You're quite welcome. Anyone else in the room wishing to be heard? Seeing no one, let's move to online.
So if you're online and like to be heard, if you can raise your hand, and if you're on phone, it would be star nine to ask to speak. You have a virtual hand? Oh, there we go. Let's see. Okay. So we have one.
It's a floating virtual hand, which is, there we go.
Okay. You should be able to unmute. There you go. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. So my name's Kimberly Caris, and I'm a Red Brook resident. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you kindly. So just a couple of things. One, I, I just want to, I do want to commend ADM for finally coming forward with a plan for affordable housing that can house families, consistent with our housing production plan for this town. So I want to commend that effort, and I'm fully in support of that. Two, I want to just bring forward just some concerns, and they're not directed at this board. I understand that these, the members of this planning board have not been members for the entire duration of the special permit process and just the, the years in the past. So I understand that. I just have some reservations. We've been promised before, you know, no occupancy permits until there's a plan for all the affordables, and I still, as one speaker astutely pointed out, there's, there's, there are still units that are left to be done that there is no plan for. So this board has said in the last two years, certainly on record, that no more occupancy permits until there's a plan for all the affordable housing. So I just want to point that out. And then last, I am, again, I commend ADM for the affordable housing efforts to house families. I, I am still a bit distrusting of ADM, and I'm sure this board is aware of the recent June 26, 2025 DEP decision, OADR docket number wet for wetlands, DEP 2024016, when it, where it was held that ADM filled, unlawfully filled approximately 13,000 square feet at Red Brook of a bordering vegetated wetlands. So in any event, that's a concern to me. They didn't file the notice of intent that was required, and the DEP did found, find against them after a full hearing and a rather lengthy considered opinion in writing. So, so I still have reservations about the intents of ADM at, at Red Brook. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone else looking, raise your virtual hand, or if you're on the phone, that's star nine to speak. Okay. Okay, Aaron, you should be good.
Hi, everyone. My name's Erin Donovan. I live on Seven Lunar Drive. So I'm right off of River Run and will be across from the Area 16. I guess my concerns might be a little bit different than everyone else's. So my house faces the street on River Run, and one of my concerns is the traffic flow through this area. It's extremely busy, and people drive really fast. But I think my concern more is that the traffic flow, I think, with adding in more houses and people using things within Red Brook community, like the gym and the restaurants, and, you know, people passing the Runway, Ham Road, they use this River Run as a cut-through. So I just wanted to express some of my concerns about the, the traffic flow and just how busy it is, and I guess just some of the safety concerns around it.
Anyone else looking to speak?
Thank you very much.
I'm not seeing anyone else looking to be recognized.
Okay. One last time. Anybody online wishing to be heard?
Nope.
No? I'll offer it one more time as well. Anyone else in the room wishing to be heard? Yes, sir. Please.
Thank you, gentlemen. 10 River Birch Way, Dick Cushman. Me and my wife were one of the first 10 people to move into this community. I wanted to go last because I wear kind of two hats. After I moved in, AD Makepeace hired me to do most of the landscape and different things. So to answer Susie's question, we've transplanted over 6,000 trees. There's not anyone in New England can There's not anyone in New England can even match that. As far as the different communities, the different neighborhoods, you can see these pines that have grown, all the blueberry bushes we put in, all the different things that we've done. We've made this community great to live in on a timber-type of atmosphere. But the real thing is the fabric of this community is the people that live in it. And the people that live in it, we were selling one hundred and twenty homes even during COVID because people liked the brand that Makepeace was putting out there and wanted to live in it. And there's a lot of people who have been put on hold that still want to move into this community. And that's, and why I support it, you know, it's tough for me because I work for Makepeace and I live there, but most of the people, and you don't see a lot of outcry, because people love living there. It's a great community. Mike Hogan had a vision, and Dan Gorsicka, with a lot of my help, made it possible. And I'm quite proud of that and stuff. You drive through, one of the residents, every time I see her, she's like, it's like coming into Disney. It's just beautiful. We love everything about it. And that's how most of this community is. And that's the real fabric, you know, not the cement foundations and the wood and all that. So I just wanted to let you know that I represent two parts. I can attest for how much we've replaced, you know, like Dan said, the forest mat. Most people don't even know what forest mat is. Acres we've replaced, you know, you go through there and everything is just gorgeous. So thank you for your time, and here are the invoices for just eight months of landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will entertain a motion to close public comment.
Make a motion to close the public comment?
I have a motion to close public comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none and everyone present, I'll call for a hand vote. All in favor? Okay, at this point, public comment on this matter is closed. So for the, for the audience in the room and online, what that means is your time to speak is now done, and we appreciate your comments, and we will be listening to them and taking them into consideration in our deliberations. Now it's our time to do our job, which is to dig in a little bit further and understand things. And so you'll hear us asking questions, including questions of Makepeace, and it may trigger your desire to learn more. And I'm sorry, but we can't keep this as a back-and-forth. It just doesn't work that way. So I'm going to ask you to, if necessary, bite your tongue. I am sure that Dan will make himself available to answer more questions. I know many of you feel he doesn't make himself available enough. I know Dan feels he makes himself available too much sometimes, so I'm sure we can all strike a balance somewhere. So at this point, I will bring it back to the board for questions regarding this matter. I will start with Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The packet that we have to review here just didn't quite top two hundred pages. And I'm somewhat proud, or maybe a little bit embarrassed to say that I pretty much read every one of them. And I'll have to give credit to Mr. Gorsicka's or to Redbrook's engineers. They've done a very thorough job. The review engineering company is a very respectable company. They had a lot of comments that appear to have been, are in the process of being addressed. And our outstanding engineering department here in town also had a lot of comments, all of which appear to be being addressed. So with that being said, I don't really have any other questions. I think the material in front of us is really answer of all. So that's what I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Mann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few questions, and in part, it's because I haven't been part of this process for quite a while, and some of my questions have come up over the years. And now that I'm in the position to ask them, I feel like I take, as somebody said earlier, I need to take a bite at the apple here in this moment. Some of them are just questions for clarity, and some are questions of concern on my part. So in this use area and Redbrook in general, I wanted to know, I'm not familiar, if there are resiliency requirements for the, you know, baseline resiliency requirements as to the utilities and systems that can be part of the homes there. EV chargers, things like that. I don't know if there are baselines for that. I don't know what the system is, but I'd like to be able to hear. I would hope that each of the homes that is constructed, given what Redbrook is all about, are looking to be the most resilient, the most perhaps electric heat pump systems, ready for solar, things like that. I'm not that familiar. I'm not, I wish I could have said that, like Mr. Bennett, that I had read through the entire thing. He's more schooled in some of the details, so a lot of it is great to me, but I did wade my way through as much as I could and tried to understand. But again, here, I'm asking for clarity. One of the things I need clarity, an additional thing, I mean, it's well-known that I'm conservation-inclined, see things through that lens. So in many ways, as, as Mr. Gorsicka said, the property is, has done wonderful things for preservation in some of the priority habitat in and around Plymouth, especially along Miles Standish and some of these priority habitat areas. But it also is a fact that this development can only be built because of that, and it's built within NHESP priority habitats and situations. So one of the things I would like to have an explanation of or some detail on are where the NHESP properties are or are not in Use Area 14 and other areas. I did see on the map where it said out and in, and, you know, it was a little confusing to me, you know, whether these properties were, this development area was in priority habitat, just outside of it, things like that. Because I do know that they're a very special species. The reason, again, for this, this whole development existing is to protect some of those rare species, and there's master plan, what do they call it, a master eastern box turtle permit, things like that. And a lot of these species, in order to protect them, they require going above and beyond, not just in preserving areas near Miles Standish and other areas, but within the project itself, within developments itself. I'm concerned in general that Redbrook has created a wall between one side of the area and its habitat on the other, and that optimally, I believe, the design should have included dedicated gaps, in other words, wildlife corridors, and I'm not sure if those things are taken into consideration. There are, I think you know, there are a whole number of special species that are in this area that are part of the Miles Standish complex and other areas, you know, very rare reptiles and amphibians, birds, insects, coastal poncho, shore, community plants, things like that, fish as well, and a lot of turtles. So I believe that protection of these species is very important and is, again, part of the character, or at least the, how Redbrook builds itself as a, you know, a community that respects and protects nature. So I would like to have the connectivity that's required for these species to thrive. You know, even turtles move hundreds of yards inland and outland, that there are, there are basic measures that are being taken. I'm not familiar if they are. Things like keeping wetlands and pond to upland movement paths open for various species like turtles, maintaining barrier-free corridors between water and nesting areas, building safe crossings where roads and driveways cut through the habitat, whole variety of things like that, even fencing in yards, avoiding continuous solid fencing. These are, again, I'm sorry to go into this kind of detail, just that I haven't had the opportunity to query you on this, and this is that opportunity, that bite at the apple, so I thought I needed to take that. So I also had conversations as part of my due diligence with Redbrook residents, some of which I heard reflected in the comments today, but I also want to echo and underscore their concerns and questions. So in terms of site preparation, I think we heard something along this, but I heard from an individual who said that one of the, that they've expressed to AD Makepeace their concern that when these developments happen, they're actually not, sometimes they take a lot more land, disturb a lot more land than they need to. And they were told that ADM's response is that once you turn it over to the builder, you don't have control over the steps that it takes for them to create the neighborhood, the individual builder. I'd like to understand if that's, is your response, and think that we could work something around that. Other people have mentioned keeping as many native trees as possible. I think you do, do a very good job of that. Obviously, I've said to you before, I'd like to see more than two trees per lot. Let's see, oh, another person brought up the fact that in an area that is largely exists because of the preservation of nearby lands and the species that thereon, that in many of the lawns that you have, you're planting Kentucky bluegrass or similar grasses on these lawns. I can understand, again, it's hard to change people's attitude about green lawns, but in this area, native grasses and ground covers should always be the choice. So that's basically, I just wanted to raise those issues. Their kind of questions, kind of statements, I appreciate the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson.
So on the, the first proposal, I'm sorry if I, maybe if I missed it, what was the AMI?
Eighty percent.
It was eighty percent, too?
Okay.
And I know we had some conversations in the past about empty lots in other neighborhoods. I was wondering if you had any that were lauded for affordable. Do we have any updates on any of that activity in regards to those lots? Yes, please.
Yeah.
Just if you don't mind, you're asking as far as like status of what's going on right now?
Correct.
So there are only two other lots that are slated for affordable that are in construction, that are townhomes, that are actively being built for occupancy this year. The other three, which were in Use Area 12, all got occupied in June and July of this year. And then the ones that were open, either open lots or open foundations, if you recall, February, maybe, we came back and asked for those to be reallocated to market rates. So those are now under construction as market rate homes.
Okay. And that's right, and you're not, they're not being replaced or taken away from because you still have the commitment of the 113?
Correct. We did not get rid of the commitment. We just reallocated.
All right, thank you. And then, I believe that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I think it was quite an education to get through all the documentation, very complete, and I was impressed in your responses to the detailed comments from McKenzie Engineering, which was extensive, and to find out that you're, you know, going to, you know, either you have already responded or that you're going to commit to responding to all of those. So I'm very pleased with that. I don't recall seeing how many bedrooms and baths are in each of the typical units, the sixty-seven and the, and the twelve.
Yeah, so in, for Use Area 14, the sixty-seven units, Eric Pontiff offers a variety of home types. There are single-floor options, I believe, with two bedrooms, there's three bedrooms, and then there's options for four. Historically, in his other neighborhoods, on average, they're three-bedroom homes.
And then in the affordable?
Yep. Right now, we're planning on three. What we're trying to do is potentially offer a fourth bedroom, if we could make that work, just to up the, frankly, the family size that could be living there.
And the wastewater is sized appropriately for all of those options?
Yes.
Okay, and I...
You're talking about... Got it. So there's two things. One, on wastewater, the answer to your question is yes. And actually, one of the meetings, I can't remember when, it was requested by this board to get a third party to actually verify that, other than coming from ourselves and coming from Weston and Sampson, which they did, which was in the packet. Lee was just mentioning the comment about fees before. I kind of will echo some of the residents' comments after that. Growth, it's really no dissimilar to taxes. It's an imperfect science, but as you have growth, you do get more revenue to offset those costs. We're a little different than taxes, obviously, because we're not dealing with police, fire, and school. But as those units come online, the intent there is that growth for the extra roadwork, for snow plowing, or the extra landscaping is then offset by the revenue received by those new homeowners. Is that the question you were referring to? Okay.
Okay, and then also, I appreciated the presentation. I don't think, it was not included in the packet that, that we got, I don't believe. The presentation?
Oh, no, and you know what I just realized? I'm sorry, I brought you all paper copies, and I never handed them out. So I do have them, if you guys would like paper copies of what we just reviewed.
My point is just that it would have been helpful to see it ahead of time, and then I was, felt that it was very clear and filled in a lot of gaps that the other documents didn't have. So thank you.
Understood.
Thank you, Bailiff Rusty. That goes back to Wapner. So, Mr. Gorsicka, I'm going to go through just some of the other questions that were asked, and, including the ones that I'll indicate why. The ones I, I'd like you to answer and the ones that I know you can't. So let me start with a general preface. Mr. Hartman started by explaining what this board's parameters are, what we're allowed to review. This is a site plan review. There are certain things we're allowed to review. There's certain things that go beyond our scope of review. We don't have to strictly limit ourselves to just these use areas, but we do have to limit ourselves to how these use areas impact the general overall development. We can't really start getting into things like landowner association fees, and that's beyond our scope. And so while it's a very valid question from your fellow residents there in, in Redbrook, it's not one that we're going to be able to answer or press you for an answer for, other than, as we always do, to encourage you to be as forthcoming with your residents as possible regarding changes, both financial and physical, to the community. We do have the, the ability to sort of address some of the other things that are in the permit. So for example, the athletic field question that was asked by Mr. Gravelin. And I know that that's been talked about and moved around in paper form a number of times. Any further thought with respect to that at this particular time?
Sure. So there's a couple of things that are referenced in the special permit. There's the athletic field we did at South Elementary School. We have the village green. I don't know the exact size in front of me that can be used for athletics. It's used, frankly, very often for whether it's gatherings, parties, bear gardens, YMCA, what have you. There was a reference on an illustrative plan about a ball field behind the Y. That was always envisioned to be part of the YMCA. There's no talks of that now. What we did do, if you guys recall, two years ago, that area back there, we took a different approach based, frankly, based on community needs and wants, and we did more of an outdoor kind of amenity area. We have a large patio, a large fire pit, and we put three pickleball courts back there, a lot of landscaping and vegetation. So the way I look at this is this is recreational items for people to use, passive recreations that people use and enjoy, and it's kind of what we've done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donardo had a question, a very legit, what do you envision as the timeline for completing these two use areas?
Sure. So let's always assume that we get through this evening, and then we get through whatever else, finalizing comments, plans, endorsements, and all that. Let's just anticipate that occurs. We'll probably start construction, tree clearing work probably mid-October, first week, mid-October. Frankly, it depends on how fast he finishes the Grantham site. So it'll be a lot going on, but construction would start... Um, so it'll be a lot going on, but construction would start probably around in October. For sheer length of road, we would start with use area fourteen. The tree clears would then flip-flop and would do that same rotational end with our utility guys. So let's just assume we're starting mid-October, mid-November, mid-December. Would probably try to get some form of binder in these areas done before winter conditions. We would then pick that up in, um, back up in the spring. So let's assume we get binder done by the end of the year, and I know I'm talking long, but this is how I process it. They would start home building over the wintertime. You're talking six months-ish, plus or minus, on home construction, but keep in mind, this is all dependent on market conditions. So in reality, the market is different than we were just two years ago, three years ago, four years ago. I think we're finally normalizing back to a twenty seventeen, eighteen, nineteen market as far as velocity and sales, not price. Not construction cost either. But assuming market conditions, you'd probably have your first homes ready for occupancy and closing probably in the summertime of next year. So in assuming that's all going well, then that's, you know, you'd probably, to be safe, a good year from now, to really start seeing those homes becoming occupied and online, assuming sales are going. And that's in both of those neighborhoods. And to Steve's point, your point about the regulatory process with, uh, the state and the affordable, we'll be doing that. Once we get our firm approvals and once we start things, we'll then be starting that process, because it takes six, eight months, depending, so.
Excellent. So another question that was raised, so are, is, as you pointed out from your chart, there's nineteen affordables remaining. And to clarify, what this board has said, and this board is very clear, is that we would not be giving permits for new market rate without corresponding affordables, and that's what you've done in this. And, uh, I think everyone has, who spoke, commended, uh, you on doing that as a simultaneous approach, and that's one that this board favors, uh, because it does give us the level of observational control that we can have. And it gives everyone some level of comfort as well. If you have any thoughts on the remaining nineteen, I know that you've held meetings with the residents to discuss uh, what their thoughts are, what they might like to see in terms of affordables. If you'd like to share that, I, I'd welcome that comment.
Okay. So also, to dovetail to that, we have nineteen affordable remaining. We still have fifty-four market rates remaining. Our intent as a company is the next time we come with plans, it's for affordable and it's for market rate. So just another assurance that we're not going to come for fifty-four and not address the nineteen, just so you folks know. Now, my goal is, is to get that stuff to you guys by the end of the year, but I promised myself I'm not doing a planning board meeting before Christmas again. Now, I lost my train of thought because I was trying to be funny. I apologize. Yeah, so the nineteen, um, this has been, we've had the same thought process for the last few years now. The difference here is where it's only nineteen, and I'll be honest with you, nineteen's an odd number. So we're really probably looking at twenty or twenty-two, um, depending. But it's a standalone, what we're thinking at now is standalone multifamily building behind the meeting house. And I know we've had meetings with you folks before about this. We've had a meeting with our residents. We had a meeting with the residents, I want to say it was early May of this year, to talk about that concept. However, that concept, if folks recall, was thirty-five units, another Grantham-style project. Not that I'm saying I would not love to explore that, because I really think that's great for the town. Um, but this would be same location, but a much smaller building. So it would only be a two-story building rather than three stories. Um, that's what we're working on now. What's that? No, multifamily, so these would be rental units.
Great, thank you. So there were some other questions. So Mr. Mand had raised some, some issues and all, again, important concerns. But people do have to understand the planning board, uh, has some restrictions that are placed on it as well. For example, when it comes to, you know, resilience and, and what, uh, solar can be required and what other materials can be required. Mass General Law's Chapter Forty A, Section Nine, is very clear that the town, including the planning board, may not impose any stricter requirements or address, or regulate in any way or restrict the use of materials or methods of construction of structures regulated by the state building code. Simply put, we can't do anything other than what the state building code requires of the developer. So while people would say, oh, every house should have solar, we can't do that. Every house should be, uh, much more energy efficient, we can't do that. Every house should have electric versus gas, heat or cooking, we're not allowed to do that. The state building code tells the developers what they can build and how they have to build it, and we are not allowed to do anything because that is just simply straight out a violation of law, and we would be struck down in a moment, uh, with a very thunderous voice. So, uh, I appreciate that. That's not something we can address. We can, however, address the question regarding wildlife corridors and what you've done with respect to that, and I think that that's a very valuable question. So would you like to address that, please?
Sure, so, and actually, um, it might be difficult. Debbie, is there a way to get... I don't think it matters which one. I know, this is gonna be hard to see, but... So as part of, while this is happening, Red Brook is a conservation-based land development community. The focus is on higher density in smaller disturbed areas with greater mass of land saving associated, as Frank pointed out, the state forest. Most of our land in CR, if not, yeah, most of it, is contiguous to the state forest. Um, which, again, it increases that biomass of the state forest itself. There are wildlife corridors, um, as far as that stuff goes. I know this is very difficult to see, and I apologize. This is the entire western side, essentially, of this development is in CR, would be in CR at some point in time. There's corridors themselves. As you can see in the neighborhoods, and again, I apologize, it's hard to see. Specifically, as you go further south, you see pockets of open space that get you from neighborhood to neighborhood. So we are aware of that. We try to do that. And as far as, you know, Frank, you made the question about the natural heritage or endangered species items, the, the plans do indicate the in and the out. But we also have a comprehensive management plan with the state regarding natural heritage. So folks were aware of what was being disturbed and what our mitigation efforts were there. You know, there was a comment, just to stay along these lines, about resiliency, environmental. Again, I would argue, or not argue, I would just state the simple fact that I think everything we do has that centered, focused. Is how do we conserve as much land as possible while providing a need to the people of this town and to the Commonwealth in general, even all the way down to our stormwater practices? There's nothing going offsite. There's nothing going to a river or stream. This stuff is getting infiltrated back into ground to go right back and get filtered through that sand to get right back down, um, to that aquifer. And then, as far as land clearing on lots, again, our focus is on density to then save larger swaths of land. So, yeah, they're small lots. Most of our lots are less than a quarter acre. It is difficult to save trees on a lot, per se. Use area fourteen lends itself a little bit more because it's relatively flat, so we'll be paying a closer attention to that. You can tell in neighborhoods that where topography is more challenging, you just, it's unfortunate, but you just can't save the trees. But our priority, again, is saving that larger space behind your hosts, or even some, an internal corridor of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, that is helpful, uh, and I can echo some of my fellow board members. I have never read a hundred pages of drainage calculations and designs before in one of our packets. Uh, I've learned a great deal about kettle holes. Uh, I think that, uh, one of the most interesting points, of course, that was raised for me, and it's something that your residents need to know, is that you have a plan that says that after every major storm, those kettle holes are inspected to make sure that drainage is working properly, and that is something that they will have to take over as the Land Owners Association in the future. So, uh, maybe some of your residents will want to become kettle hole and drainage experts in the interim. I think I've done enough reading on that for the time being.
Don't forget catch basin inspections.
Catch basins as well. The, they were lovely. So beyond that, I think that is all of my questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything further from staff?
We will just, we'll actually add a definition of substantially constructed into the decision, and then we'll add the language about the five occupancies for the last five units.
Okay. So with those definitions added, uh, and of course, with all the conditions requirement, uh, set forth in the engineering and other town staff requirements, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And I'm gonna call that out as, at this point, is the board comfortable with voting on both use areas at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion then is for approval of both use areas.
Yes, motion to approve both use areas.
Okay, I have a motion to approve both use areas. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote for hands. Uh, Mr. Smith, I'm gonna ask you to vote anyway as an advisory. So all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you for a thorough presentation, and thank you, residents, for coming out and asking your questions and giving your, your input. It makes the process better.
Thank you.
I know a lot of people are gonna clear out, so why don't we take a five-minute recess to let everybody clear out before we resume?
Thank you.
Alright, we are all set? Oh. Meeting is back in session. Uh, next on our agenda tonight is site plan review for eleven Resnick Road, construction of a nine thousand six hundred and fifty square foot addition to the rear of the existing MAP Academy. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin King, and I'm with Atlantic Sign Engineers, representing the applicant Turtle LLC. So as you mentioned, uh, the applicant is looking to construct a nine thousand six hundred fifty square foot addition to the existing MAP Academy Charter School. Oh, there we go. Uh, so shown on the screen here is the current existing conditions. Um, we've got a one-way access roadway with parking, uh, along the side, uh, and on the other side of the building here. And shown here is the proposed addition, uh, and parking lot expansion. Uh, again, we are just basically taking the access road and extending it out, uh, one way around the building and following the same traffic circulation pattern. There's, we're proposing seventeen additional ten-by-eighteen spaces, bringing the total up to sixty-one parking spaces, which meets the, uh, town bylaw. The addition itself, uh, will be used for additional classroom and office space. With no change to the, uh, style of the building. It's gonna be two stories with one ground floor and one first floor. The topography of the site actually slopes off on this side that allows for the ground floor entrance. I don't believe the architected rules are in this, but you can see, based on those, kind of what I'm talking about. In terms of utilities, the site already has gas, electric, water, and is on-town sewer. We don't propose any change to those. Stormwater, we have two proposed sub-surfaces systems that are gonna be collected with catch basins and first defense units. We have roof drains coming off the building that are also led into those. Once again, for the grading, we're trying to just mimic the natural topography and not alter any of the waterways that are currently there. We have been, we have received one round of DPW engineering comments, which we've addressed. Sorry you guys haven't had a chance to look at those yet. We just finished them up earlier this week. We plan to satisfy all their comments and work with them until they are fully satisfied. In addition to that, we have received fire department sign-off, site access sign-off. They've looked at our fire turning detail here and they're okay with the access that we're providing currently. And I believe that will be all for now, so I'll open it up to any questions from you guys.
Great, thank you. Staff?
So this is before the board as a site plan review. The use itself as an educational nonprofit is exempt, so it's actually, the use is allowed, not even subject to zoning, but the law says, subject to reasonable dimensional and site requirements. So this addition is to the rear, it has limited visibility from Resnick Road. There is a requirement for a 50-foot buffer to the rear of the property and that buffer remains untouched and the limited works ends at that buffer. So the 50-foot buffer to the rear and the residential zone remains in place, exempt use, fairly modest addition with limited visibility from Resnick Road.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this? Seeing no one, is there anyone online wishing to be heard?
If you'd like to be heard online, raise your hand, virtual hand. I've not seen anyone looking to be recognized.
We do have someone in the room, so why don't you come forward?
Hi, I'm Rachel Babcock. I'm one of the co-founders and co-directors of MAP Academy. My other co-founder and co-director, Josh Arpentier, is here too. And just really quickly, just wanted to sort of give a voice to the reason for this expansion is that the MAP Academy serves students who have disengaged or dropped out of other high school environments. We serve students from over 30 towns across the South Shore region and we have grown tremendously. We're at our capacity of 300 students and this addition is really gonna help us to provide more robust ancillary spaces. We're sort of bursting at the seams and this addition will allow us to spread out, have more space for high-quality programming, career labs, better gathering spaces for our staff, fitness room. So we're really excited about it. We're thankful to the owner for being willing to invest in this additional space for us and happy to answer any questions that anyone might have about what we do and why we need the space. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Lee, one final check, anyone online?
Again, if online you want to be recognized, raise your virtual hand. I've not seen anyone.
Okay, then I will bring it back to the board for questions. Mr. Donaldson?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Smith?
I see that in the existing plan that there's picnic areas at the back of the property that'll be eliminated with the addition and the parking. Is that something that's, that is planned in some other way or is it just something that's gonna be done without?
So we do have a, and I'm sorry I glossed over this the first time, we do have a small area here that would be an exterior patio. It would be pervious pavers and that would kind of replicate as like the picnic area, if you will, the lounge area there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That was all I had.
Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions. First about the exemption, Mr. Hartman. You mentioned that schools have an exemption and so that kind of limits some of the things you can ask for, I guess. But this is not the school's building, it's privately owned and it could next week be something else?
Yeah, they may, they may have an issue with that. So this is an exempt use and these are being permitted as an exempt use. So for example, when you have a school, Oak Street School, and you wanna switch that use to something else, just because it was built as an exempt use doesn't necessarily make it's available for anything else because it's there. So as an exempt use, let's just say the MAP Academy leaves and we'll be looking at this property to make sure that whatever else goes in there complies with zoning and it has to. So the exempt use means that you can't require a special permit, you can't impose unreasonable conditions on it, but if it ceases to operate and something else goes in there, it's gotta comply with zoning.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And it does, you're right, it does. For example, if we think about New Hope Chapel in a residential zone that's been built as an exempt use, if they ever decided not to use that as a chapel and sell it, they have a single-family house, a very big single-family house. Or we'd have to figure out some other way around it, but that is, it can be an issue with exempt uses.
Okay, thanks. So a lot of my other questions are, let's say I have blinders on relative to its use right now, because I've visited the site and I've seen it before, I think it's right next to the Boys and Girls Club. And it's in a sensitive area. It's, and it's also perched, I'm not sure, I would expect it's fill, it's big flat surface perched above the nearby pond and it falls away very steeply at the edge of the parking lot. It just falls away at a two-to-one, three-to-one, I don't know, pretty steep. So anything that comes off there is gonna go down to that pond. So in this plan, where it's already in, from what I can tell, it's already encroaching on some wetland buffers and the NHESP priority habitat line that's there. And this expansion will move it even further into those areas. And so my, my observation of the site indicates that the habitat, the pond, all that has not been respected by the owners, I'll say, as there's trash there all over the place, there's a dumpster right on the edge and old solar panels just dumped there. Various kinds of trash all throughout the area. And the pond itself is not in the best condition and of course I don't blame MAP Academy for that, but overall it's a deteriorated condition down there. Also, much of the building and grounds are within Zone 2 and 3 of the Aquar Protection District and in a flood zone. So considering all those things and the steep fallaway from the existing parking area, I'm concerned that no amount of onsite drainage is gonna protect that pond from things coming off there, especially as we get closer and closer encroaching to the 35-foot line even in the back there, where there's little muddy pond and it's connected to a coastal plain pond called North Triangle. It also moves the property back to the very edge of the 50-foot buffer that's supposed to be wooded between it and the residents behind there. And I believe the residents have been there a long time. So all those things make me a little unsure of the benefits of overall expanding this building on this site, considering there's a lot of industrial park property that could be in a better situation. So like I say, I'm trying to put blinders on about the use. I value the use, I think it's something that's very much needed. I'm not sure that this location is necessarily required for that use, considering all the other things that are maybe available or whatever, but those are my concerns, I don't know how you can address them.
I could speak to a few of those. So we have reached out, we're going to be in front of the Conservation Commission at the end of September, where we'll present the project and go through any concerns that they may have and make sure to clear up any issues that come up during that. We have received approval from NHESP that this project will not adversely affect the resource area, so it's already been reviewed and approved by them. We are proposing double erosion control, which I know that's, in your eyes, not going to prevent any further disruption of that pond there. However, that is the best efforts that we can put forth for it. There is a slope off, as you mentioned, towards the rear of the site. We will be providing a small retaining wall, about one or two feet, that we'll use to bring around this access roadway here. This addition actually moves the dumpster pad further away from any resource areas in hopes that we would prevent any further garbage, if you will, dispersing down into any of those sensitive areas there. And I'm sorry, what was, what was another concern there that I haven't addressed?
Maybe the trash and the solar panels?
Yeah, I mean, obviously you can't address, you know, the, the condition of the area and I, I haven't gone around the entire area, but I almost would assume, I remember something a few years ago that I was involved with in the same general area, maybe on North Triangle, where there was essentially indifference to the, the pond nearby in there. I, I think it's a great resource that should be paid attention and maybe a, a school could make that part of their curriculum to, go ahead. Of course, shouldn't he?
Josh Arpentier, I'm the other co-founder and co-director of MAP Academy Charter School. I, I agree with you, there are some solar panels behind the dumpsters. We just cut back to school yesterday, actually, and the only time we can really complete roof maintenance is during the summer months, so we did have some roof maintenance done over the summer and those solar panels are in the process of being removed. We just haven't had a chance to get rid of them yet, they will be gone. As far as the trash around the property, our students haven't been in session for most of the summer. We do several times a year do trash cleanups in the neighborhood, in our media area. We do plan to do one of those this fall, as we do every other year. And as far as the, the ideal location, I agree, there are a lot of other buildings in the industrial park, but there are no other buildings in the industrial park right next door to the Boys and Girls Club. And our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club allows us tremendous opportunities for enrichment activities like physical education in the gym, the weight room area, the Josh Glenn Memorial Music Center. It provides incredible opportunities to our students that we wouldn't have if we were not right next door to the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to your point on the pond, we actually have used it for educational purposes. We do regularly, we have a partnership with Bridgewater State University and actually they were out, they've been out several times, they did a whole watershed lab and a whole bunch of, of real science at the pond in conjunction with our science team. So we agree on the pond.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Mann?
No, thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first off, I'm gonna start off, I, I highly applaud your mission. I think this is, you're doing a wonderful thing here. And you already addressed one of my questions about the retaining wall height. And I do want to lament the loss of the picnic area. Wondering, and I'm sure the educators do as well, perhaps maybe the Boys and Girls Club have some place where the kids can touch grass at some point? I would hope so. As far as the conservation issues, I'm gonna leave that to the Conservation Commission, who's certainly very capable and I wish you luck there. The other question I have is, and I assume that the Natural Heritage issued, what they issued would be a no-take letter for their, it's not necessarily an approval, but they've, they've given you a letter that says you will not take habitat?
Yes, I believe that is correct. I don't have it with me, but we've received it through the Conservation Commission process. I know that we've applied and sent them and they returned and said that it would not adversely affect the resource area.
Okay. Yep, I've prepared those myself and Natural Heritage is fairly rigid and diligent as well as our Conservation Commission is too. The other question I have for you is sort of a housekeeping thing and this, this has come up before. Do you, do you have a professional land surveyor on staff at Atlantic?
We, we do have a stamped plan. I know that that came up, that actually came up through the DPW's review as well and we went ahead and, once again, I'm sorry, I don't have that before you guys now because we just finished it, but it has been reviewed and approved and stamped by a registered professional land surveyor.
Okay, so, so this plan, the site plan, not just an A&R plan or Foreman or something like that?
Site plan and existing conditions plan have both been stamped.
Okay, yeah, certainly, I believe I saw somewhere you're in EIT, is that correct?
I'm in EIT, yes.
Okay, so you're gonna be in front of the board at some point, you wanna stay on their good side.
Yeah.
So abide by their regulations, it's 250 CMR, 501B, it's pretty clear.
I, I do have the, the plans set in, in here, but I didn't want to bring that up because I know you guys haven't had a chance to take a look at it.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that, and then I saw the engineering comments, we don't, you don't have a response letter yet, so I'm assuming you've worked on that and I understand that process is iterative. So I think that, that's all, that's all the comments I have.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. So, Mr. Hartman raised it as a good point, is that this is an exempt use which significantly limits the scope of our review. The Dover Amendment makes it very clear that this is an allowed use. It doesn't have to be a municipal school, it's any educational facility or religious facility. So, and that can be a private nonprofit education corporation, which this is. So that means that we're subject to limited, I'm sorry, yes? Sure.
We are a public school, a Commonwealth charter school.
Oh, you're a Commonwealth?
And not a private educational facility. We're a Commonwealth charter school.
Excellent, thank you for that clarification. That's, that makes it even clearer. So this is a, an educational facility, we are subject to those restrictions. Now, we are allowed to regulate things that are standard, height and bulk of structures, yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking and building coverage requirements. Those are the things that we're allowed to address and we have to make reasonable accommodations. Essentially, if, we can't simply put a, we can't simply say we're going to facially apply these restrictions. Just because something says it has to be 150-foot setback, we can't say, well, that's it. The fact of the matter is, the law says that those can be considered unreasonable, we have to address them in the individual capacities of the proponents coming before us. Regulations are considered unreasonable if they detract from the usefulness of the structure, impose excessive costs, or impair the character of the proposed structure. That's what the Supreme Judicial Court has said in 1993 and 2001. So looking at this, the only setback requirement that's not being strictly met is the rear setback, which is instead of 150 feet, it's 130 point, 132.9 feet. And the 50-foot buffer is still being maintained. The, the building inspector, the building commissioner here, has determined that because the 50-foot buffer is being maintained, the difference between the 150-foot versus 132.9 foot is not a significant difference. And certainly, making a change that would require a 17-foot reduction in the size of the building would be a, would substantially detract from the usefulness of the structure. Put simply, it's not an offset that I think I would be comfortable in suggesting is remotely appropriate or in compliance with the statute. So I think, given those circumstances, I'm in support of all of the ideas that have been presented to try and make this as good a structure- presented to try and make this as good a structure as possible, given the parameters of the site. Anything that you can do to enhance the compatibility with the area, protecting the pond, creating some sort of open space, some green space connection perhaps with the Boys and Girls Clubs next door, given that you have such a good relationship, all of those things would be encouraged, but not something that we can mandate as a board. So, that said, I encourage you to do those things to protect our environment, to make this, what is already a wonderful school, give those people who have already seen some hardship in their lives a little bit more to look forward to when they come to your building. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Hartman?
I will say that we will confirm that we have the no-take letter from Natural Heritage. And if it's not, then we will add that as a condition that says prior to work that no-take letter should be presented.
Okay. So, at this point, do I have a, we're here again, so it's motion to approve on a site plan review? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much for coming in and best of luck with what is a very important mission and greatly appreciated by our community and I'm sure many others.
Thank you very much.
Last item on our agenda this evening, the always enjoyable MBTA Communities Law.
Do we have a public hearing notice?
We have a public hearing notice on this. Yes, we do. No, I will double-check. I'm sure there's one in here. And here it is. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the 1820 courtroom, Town Hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts on Wednesday, August 27, 2025, at 7:05 PM, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plymouth zoning bylaw, Section 206.6, multi-family overlay district, and to amend the official zoning map, Sheet 2, multi-family overlay district, by adding Lot 28A on Assessors Map 104 and removing lots A-232, 10-418, 10-500, 10-501, and 10-502 on Assessors Map 77D, as well as amend Section 201.3, definition of family, or take any other action relative thereto. The full text of the zoning amendments and amended zoning map and other information are available and may be inspected at the Office of Town Clerk, Planning Board Office, and on the town's website. Mr. Hartman?
Thank you. So, let me just, I'm wondering if I added the definition of family. Let me double-check this. I may need to add that into the language we have. I think I might have omitted. I think I did. So, I will add. So, the Commonwealth has asked us to define family. This has come up now on several occasions where we have dealt with this. And so, we need to redefine the term "family" as part of this. So, that was something that the Attorney General had cautioned us to about. So, we will define the family and I'm hoping I can find that quickly. Yeah, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge. So, we need to just simply, so our definition of family right now talks about related people, and it really can't say related. So, it's a very simple, it just says one or more people living in a household together. And I always like to use myself as an example. I have a wife. I have an adopted daughter by my wife, but not by me. You go tell me if that's, how that qualifies as a family of related people. So, this day and age family is really just what you call a family. So, we'll be changing the definition of family. It's something, again, on a couple of occasions, we've been warned about, so we'll clean that up. The second thing, just kind of reviewing where we were, we hired the Barrett Planning Group and we went through a very extensive process to comply with the state's MBTA Communities Law. They have a very complicated model that the state says you have to use to show compliance with MBTA law. So, we, as a town, identified some sites that we thought would work. And just kind of to review, we said, let's take credit, we, the community, said, let's take credit for where we've already done high-density, multi-family development. We've done enough. We've done our share. And so, let's just take credit for that and superimpose this district over those areas. So, we went through that process. Barrett Planning Group ran through the compliance model. The compliance model said we were in compliance with the MBTA law. The town meeting approved that map, that overlay district, which was overlaid over Cottage Park, was overlaid over some of the Colony Place neighborhoods, was overlaid over a portion of the Pine Hills, and also the Oasis Project. What we found out afterwards, a year later, after we submitted this, again, the Attorney General looked at the language and the map and said that all was fine with them. But then the state said, well, we have the second compliance law provision. That's not in the model. That says at least 50% of your total zone has to be contiguous to itself. And because of that, they're asking us to go back to town meeting and amend the map. So, what we've done, as we've looked at it to figure out how we can comply, if you look at the map here, we can see that this is, this is the newly approved Canso, the former Claremont property right here. This is Sawyer's Reach. This is the 40B Hanover property here. So, what we looked at and figured out that we could do is to make this district slightly larger by adding the Westwood Village neighborhood to it, and then taking the Pine Hills overlay district and eliminating the piece in front of the market, and then that runs over to the Village Green and the Brazuto, Brazuto, Brazuto neighborhood apartments. So, we'll make this one a little smaller and then just make this one a little bigger. I met with the Executive Board of the Westwood Village. They support this change. They asked me to meet with the neighbors. So, we had a neighborhood meeting also. They had no objections to this. So, in the end, we're going to make a cosmetic change to the overlay district that will have zero impact. There's no way, these places have already been developed. They're subject to a special permit. So, this is a change to meet the requirements of the law that I do not anticipate seeing any other changes. And in addition to the definition of family, they are also asking us to make one other change, which is to just simply say that no special permits will be required. And if there was anything that required a special permit, such as maybe floodplain, that the planning board can deal with that through site plan review, if, if at any point there was ever a submission here for this. And again, I have a full slide deck here that I plan to show you because I think the board is very familiar with this. But our goal is to present this at a town meeting, get this done. We're in compliance now. As long as this gets adopted, we'll be fine. And non-compliance faces a whole host of issues. So, again, I think once this is all said and done, it's really more of a cosmetic change than anything, and we'll have 50% of the zone in one contiguous area and be in compliance. We did send this off to the state. They would not say that they thought what we did would warrant approval, but they did say it appears to be consistent and appears to be something that they will support.
That's often as good as you'll get from the state. As this is a public hearing, I'll open up. Is there anyone in the room wishing to be heard? Seeing no one, is there anyone online wishing to be heard?
If you want to be heard online, raise your virtual hand. I'm not seeing that. I think we're good.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment?
So would.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Public comment is now closed. Questions for Mr. Hartman from the board. Mr. Mann?
You said, but I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, especially about the Pine Hills. I know that they increased their overall population density by having a commercial area have designated condominiums that they lease in a commercial fashion. And does this area cover that area and?
So, that already, it already exists. We're actually reducing the district in the Pine Hills. So, that, yes, those areas are already in the district.
But in no way does this give them the opportunity for additional density?
They would have to abandon their special permit, as would Westwood Village. And I don't know how you would ever do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, I noticed that one of the, the law requires no age restrictions. And I know that Westwood Village is a 55 and older development. So, I guess, since it's already built out.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Right. So, this, this change that town meeting is looking at and what the state is requiring does not require anything to be built and it doesn't require that you're zoning land that's unbuilt. So, the zoning itself disregards what's actually in the ground. So, those things don't really apply because they're existing.
So, so Westwood Village could not, going forward, allow residents, according to their bylaws, under 55?
They would have to abandon their special permit and start over. And again, I don't see how that could happen.
No. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Donaldson?
I believe everyone asked the questions I needed. I have no further questions.
And I have nothing further.
And I will send you the definition of family. But again, the big part of that is that it simply can't refer to...
No mama?
A...
Blood relation or...
Relations, right, right.
Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing, I'll entertain a motion. And I guess the motion would be a motion to recommend approval to town meeting?
Motion to recommend to town meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Hopefully, the second time's a charm. Do we have any new business this evening? Okay, our next meeting is September the 10th. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. This meeting's adjourned.